Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting in order. This is a regular session of the mayor and council. City of Visby, County of Cortez, State of Arizona, is being held on Tuesday, January 3rd, 7:00 PM, in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Johnny Giacaminho?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Mel Suiet?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Stephen Hawken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you for the invitation tonight. I have a moment of silence to let everybody reflect on their year and what may be coming. So we'll stand and have a moment of silence and then say goodbye to the ladies. Thank you. Long year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No proclamations, just wishing everybody a happy new year. Hope everybody's holidays went well. It's like we are all here today, so we made it through it. It's a good thing. So, we'll just move on. We'll call the public, get that one drive through. So, we'll move on to general business. First order of general business will be accounts payable. And motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $177,291.17.
I'll second that. Number of motion and a second. Questions?
Hey, Tom.
Johnny, for me.
Hey, Tom. I'm just curious what Main Street Park is versus Grassy Park. And that seems to be a new thing. Did we split Grassy Park now into two different accounts?
That's the power bill, right?
$10.97. Oh, I see what I did. I see, yeah, you're right. I lied, never mind.
Okay.
I got it.
Well, you're lying because I can find it.
Yeah.
Braille.
I think this is gold.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You?
No.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
On page four, facility equipment and supplies from New Line, ice wrap around glasses for $829.
That is all of our PPE for our guys up in public works. Ice is what they call an ice wraparound. It's glasses that wrap all the way around for protection. So, it's not just glasses, there's a whole order that we get of PPE.
Oh, so this is not just glasses?
No, no.
Okay, that's why my question...
We do a mass order of everything. They just only put, like, the first thing that you, like, put into the cart, that's what they do.
Okay, and the second question on this, is this something we do around the season? Is this something we do once a year? And we do it every year at the same time? And we had previous equipments? What do we, are these replacements? Are these new ones?
For...
Yeah, for this, for this safety equipment.
Yeah, so this is just all of our PPE. So, we have our sunglasses and safety glasses and gloves. So, this is whenever we start running low, we make an extra order so we have it in stock for all our guys, so we don't run out.
So, this is just a replenishment?
Yeah, this is, yeah, it happens probably every couple of months, roughly, when we make an order. Just depends on what's going on around town.
Okay. One more, I don't know if you, on page six, just the number APS, Main Street Library, is this number, the $477.95, is this a regular bill? Or is this, is this what we average? I just, the number is a bit... Page six, APS...
Power bill.
Yeah, six means three, library, for the library, I think, that's for the library.
Yeah, six mean, so that's, that's the electric power bill for...
Is that a normal bill for 77? Or is this...
I couldn't say without looking back on history.
Okay.
It's a little more, because it's winter. I know, they normally run three something.
That's what the...
Yeah, but, you know, they have, they have.
If you're interested, you can write back.
It's fine, yeah, just, I was just saying the number is at the top.
The other question I have, and that's a general question, on number, page eight, and I know this happens every year, from Ace Hardware, several belts for ice melt, I know for the snow. I think maybe Matt can clarify. My question is, we know this happens every year. Is this something, and we go out and buy it retail, is this something should we just thinking, budget for this, make sure we have it, buy it wholesale? We run out and buy like a ton of the stuff from Ace Hardware for the ice melt? I think this is to use for when we had the snow.
Yes. We do budget for this, because we know it happens every year. And for the bags, this is, Ace Hardware was actually the better price. We priced it out with three or four different other companies.
Yeah.
And for the price of what we were getting, there are other options that we will be looking at as well, that we're looking at. It's just, you have to plan out a lot more for that.
That's what requires planning, that's what, that's my question.
That's what we're working on.
Because, you know, this happens, we go and buy the ice melt, and it's like, I mean, there's three or four belts, that's up to over four or five tons.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, almost $6,000.
Yeah, we don't usually use a lot.
Yeah.
So, the large orders would be...
Planned for.
That would probably use up for like a couple, like, three to four years. So, I would have to check with shop life with that product and see if it lasts that long, if we use enough for all that. So, yeah, that's something that we've been learning.
And that's the purpose of this question, to make sure that we plan for this. It's not so, now what's happened, we needed it, I'm not questioning that.
I know how to have the snow this winter.
What?
Stock up.
Just one thing I know from buying some, if you store it through our monsoons, it's like concrete, it will start to absorb the moisture, and then when you go to use it, it's like...
Like rock.
It's rock, yeah.
So, it's almost one of those things you gotta kind of buy before the season, like, at least the stuff I do.
And to buy, just, my question is to plan for it, so we're not going around buying it retail, I'm, that's the assumption on that.
Yeah, we didn't check the price on this stuff.
Okay.
We're not just going out to, because it's easy.
I've got a question. Didn't we used to use sand all the time, rather than ice melt?
Yes, we make sand and ice melt.
They have a belt for sand, too?
Yes. Yeah, we, we actually on, following the previous bills are on this one, there is a bill for sand.
No, we have it here, actually. There's a belt for $600 for sand. Actually, I just saw it, yeah. It's like ice melt, this is another belt for $600.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sand's a lot cheaper.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
And a lot messier, though.
But it doesn't do as good of a job.
They help, maybe you need to use more sand, I don't know.
On Main Street, I remember when we used to put a lot on Main Street, it was like walking on the beach.
Actually, through environmental reasons, we don't like to use sand this much.
Anyway.
I have a last question, and I don't know if you or Steve can help me, I think something I brought up today. On the city hall building, on the demolition and earthquake, we have two belts, 48 and 14. Just, and I'm sorry. Therefore... The question is, will this basically finalize the demolition for the, for the building? Or is more to come?
This is probably it for the demolition, okay? I don't know if there's any left payable for the convection.
What page were you looking at, so I know?
Last page.
It's 299.
Page 11.
Okay.
Capital improvement.
Right at the bottom.
K and G, you can look at it.
I believe there is one more for the finalized, it's like $64,000, I believe there is one more coming.
Oh.
And that's the final one for that project.
It was $148,000 overall.
Yes, the whole contract.
Yeah. So, there's one more then?
Yes, there is.
I don't know.
Okay.
And there were bills before this, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, I have one next.
These aren't the first two bills.
We'll decide in contract.
Yeah.
Any else?
That's all I have.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $177,291,017 cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have, so move. We'll move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. There's, there's A through H. We have approval of two different minutes for December. We have, looks like, two reappointments and two acceptance of resignations for planning and zoning, Visby Arts, Hills Board, and then finally two park and facility use permits. Oh, one facility park and use permit and one approved liquor license application. So I'll ask, anybody like anything cool for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as agenda size.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through H. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items A through H. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So move. We'll move on to old business. Old business is number three, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-22-2. This is acknowledging a right-of-way in Zacatecas Canyon. As you can see, we've been given a map that was asked for currently at the last meeting, and hope this clarifies things for people, that's a little dark.
It printed out verbally, yes.
It was a colored one, I know it was better, but...
If you'd like...
I have, Cato signed up, if you'd like to come up and speak, and we'll, we'll go ahead and discuss that. Thanks.
Mayor and council, I'm Cato Daley, I live up in Zacatecas, and my property is lots 35 through 43. And I see that on exhibit A, that describes the area that y'all are talking about, on the last line, it says, "Accept any of those portions lying within lots 34 through 40", block blah blah blah, so on. And so my question is that why weren't lots 41, 42, and 43 included in that exception? And if there's no reason why, then could I ask that they are included?
That, I would have to leave to a survey, unless you wrote the survey, so maybe...
We rely on the surveyor, the surveyor determined that this section was the section that wasn't existing as a dedicated right-of-way, that there was dedicated right-of-way up to this section, and the reason they requested this is because there were no recorded documents showing this as dedicated right-of-way.
I understand all that, thank you, I appreciate that. But my, my, my question is that when, on this part of the formation...
Legal description.
It says on the bottom, "Accept", so it's this piece of land that you're talking about, and it says, "Accept for those portions lying within lots 34 through 40". So if you look at your plot, plot map there, you can see lots, and, you know, it's hard to see the numbers, but I know what they are, it comes 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, then 29, 40, 41, 42, 43. Do y'all see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, why are lots 41, 42, and 43 not included in that exception?
I think it deals with the sentence before, it says the sidelines, to the length and short necessary to intercept a southerly, whatever, I think it's because there's an exception in those two lots, or those, that area, it's the only place there's an exception that he needed to put in as part of the description, the rest of it's fine. So there's, usually, I don't know that much, I know a little bit about surveying, but what I know is that there's an exception to how the lines were made, they'll make an exception to just that particular area. They don't need to make an exception all the way up to 43.
And because those weren't affected by the width of the thoroughfare.
Right.
Okay, well, I just need to say that the between lots 38 and 43, it's pretty narrow. And if you say, and it's a 30-foot wide strip there...
As I said, I am not a surveyor, I can show you on this, where they highlighted the, the area where it transitions through here, it does not affect these lots, the width does not affect these lots. And that, that was done by a licensed surveyor.
Okay, and I, I am, and I'm just saying that if it's a 30-foot wide strip of land which says at the beginning of exhibit A, that, that fragment there, then between lots 43 and 38, it's narrower than 30 feet, so...
According to his survey, have you seen, have you measured the pins he put in?
I can't find them. I know where the four, I know where the four-inch iron pipe is, because we put that in. Okay, well, I just, you know, I was just, it was just odd to me that the, all these lots are included except for those three, 41 through 43, which are, I know that the drain, drain area is on 41 and 42, but at 43, that's the entrance to our property there. And so that's why I'm a little bit, you know, questioning that it...
The way the surveyor did it, it, it doesn't impact or affect those lots.
Okay. But this wasn't on the previous description that we got last two companies?
This was a corrected, this was a corrected legal description that was provided by the title company.
You're more than happy to do your own, and if it doesn't coincide with this, but we had to go...
Again, I just, I didn't understand why these other lots were excluded and these were all part of that. That's my question.
And, anything else?
Well, thank you.
You have a question?
Well, my involvement, you're, that's that sliver in the picture, right? That they're talking about? That little bitty, looks like a knife blade right there? That's what the right-of-way is?
Yes, this little...
Yeah, wait. Or is it this?
It's the dark one.
Oh, it's the dark one, it's not that little sliver at the base?
It's that line that goes in between those lots. It was a little clearer on the color choppy.
Can I try and print it out?
Where's the, here's the color.
So where's the...
He must see, yes.
Yeah, we see it.
Did it print color?
It did print color, but it's...
We'll have it here, and then this clear.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, you can, it's good.
It's a continuation of this, it's good.
So that's...
It's just that way.
So that's the right-of...
Here's the green.
Right, so that's the right-of-way then, correct?
Yes.
This basic sentence is wrong.
And that's all it's doing, is acknowledging that as a public right-of-way, a public thoroughfare, because the title company could not find any recorded documents for that last little section, and the property owner who's on the back end of that, then wasn't, they, they were having an issue with the title company, because they weren't showing any legal access to their property.
Right.
So they went through the, the effort of having it surveyed and figuring out where that, the surveyor figuring out where that thoroughfare would be, and that's why the legal description, and that's why, you know, it doesn't...
So they didn't necessarily base it off the old road?
It's not necessarily based off of what's, what's, you know, the width isn't necessarily going to be identical to what's out there with people driving on it, because 30 feet's going to be quite a bit wider than what is currently being used. But it was required to be a 30, a 30-foot section to make it a, a public right-of-way thoroughfare, so that they could have that recorded, so that they can show that they have legal access to the property.
So it shows the line stopping, um, does that, is that where it was on the top?
At their, at their property.
Oh, that's that, other people's property.
That's their property.
Oh, okay, and that's not Freeport property?
No, that's the one that's applying.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
So, um, if, if the city wanted to do anything with the road that's up in that spot there, for those 43 and 42 lots, that 30-foot that the surveyor's talking about, would that mean that the city would be able to go in onto what those properties are?
No, it's accepting those, those aren't part of the right-of-way. So what you, you actually benefit, because prior to this, you didn't have a recorded access to 43, and this provides recorded access.
Sure, sure.
Well, it's up to the title government, the title company.
Sure, sure, do I understand that.
But if, and any future improvements to this would be subject to this being put on the capital improvement plan for the city, and would be subject to the city's regular course of determining which, which areas require improvements and stuff, but whatever, ultimately, in the future, there would be an improvement, it would be in this specific right-of, this specific right-of-way, following that legal description, so it wouldn't impact those properties to the north.
Okay, yeah, I'm not interested at all in that section of road being fixed at all, but again, I just need to say that the fact that 41, 42, 43 are not in the exception line makes me a little bit concerned, I suppose that's the word I want to use, because there's nothing in this that says that those, it won't, the road won't infringe on those three lots.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what you're saying, exact, it's got to be exactly 30 feet to the whole way?
It says already, how much is exhibit A?
Yeah, it's a 30-foot strip of land situated...
30-foot wide.
Which is the minimum for a...
Right.
A dedicated right-of-way.
I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the, the actual survey thing, and right there says 27 feet.
The fix rate?
I know what, I, I read that.
It says right at the time, 30 foot, on the survey description.
Why, it's, why... On that last area where you, between 43 and 38...
Correct.
It says, surveyed at 26, but then it's got like four feet coming right to the, I guess, city west.
And just so you know, just to point out, the, the title report shows that this is already, this is city property. It's, we're, we're not dedicating anything that is not city property. This is city property, it's just acknowledging it as a thoroughfare right-of-way. The city already owns this property. It's not anybody's, any portion of 41, 42, or 43, this is city property that we're just designating as public thoroughfare right-of-way.
So, if you look right here, from there to this is 26 feet, and then it's four feet to the edges of lot 38, so that's the 30 feet.
Uh-huh, what about, can I come up here?
Yeah. That right-of-lot, three ways.
Yeah.
So from there to there, you can see it says 26 feet. I don't know what that one is, because you didn't survey that portion.
But you see, what I'm saying is that it's giving exceptions for these lots here, if, if the 30-foot infringes on them. It's not saying any exceptions for these two lots in particular.
Right, so there's, it, it, they would not be an exception here, but they am ready to be one here.
So theoretically, the city could go in on these two lots here?
Whatever 30 feet is from this, from this corner, yeah.
And again, this is the legal description of the city's property. This is the legal description that was already recorded in book one, max page 25, 62. So this is the legal description of the city's property that has been city property for decades, this is just, they didn't have anything that was recorded showing that it had been dedicated as a public right-of-way.
Right, so none of this is going on anybody's land.
It's not taking any land from anybody's property, it's already city property, it's just identifying the legal description of the city property and dedicating that as public right-of-way.
So, then is it technically the road that runs up there, is that what this is?
Mm-hmm.
A portion, a small portion, right?
Just that last little bit of it. According to the title company, that small little tail portion of it, they couldn't find any recorded documents showing that that had been dedicated as right-of-way, so they couldn't really show legal access to their client's property, so that's why they are going through this process, to show that, that, that city property, again, it's already city property, it's just identifying that city property as a public right-of-way, as opposed to just city property.
And that was the whole idea, was to clarify that part, that's why the survey was done, wasn't for anything else, but just to clarify this one.
Just to make sure that...
That's, that's what we talked about.
City property, yeah.
Yeah, so they're making the exceptions on the one side, but the other side, there's no exceptions.
Well, there is, sorry.
But again, those exceptions were done back when the property was acquired by the city decades ago. These aren't new exceptions, is what I'm saying. This is the legal description of the property as it exists.
Okay, I guess I...
So we can't change that, is what I'm saying, we cannot change this, the legal description of the city's property.
Yeah, the city has, on the other side of the road, 39 is an exception.
Well, it's included in 30, it's included in 34, 44, 49 is included.
Correct, and so they're on both sides of the road, except for those three lots.
Yeah. Exceptions, there's no exceptions on 41, 42, and 43.
Correct.
But we, they need to, because it's exceptions on the other side. That's really right, don't ask me why. Anyway. Probably if you're going to have an exception going along on one side, not... All right.
That's why he's staying here from survey.
Anyway, friend of mine just served, I helped him, and it drives him nuts.
Your choir's command.
So I do have one more question, I don't know if you can answer. That sliver I was talking to you about is actually the road that was originally on this record of surveys, exhibit B. When you look at the ledger, it shows you the little hash that says, uh, something dirt road, I can't read it. It's like the dirt up from the bottom and the... So if you follow that little line, you go, it cuts into...
Yeah, along the dirt road.
Yeah, it cuts into lot 38, 36, whatever it is, 37, those, it cuts into those. I guess that's why I was confused, because if they were actually following the original dirt road, they're not...
Like I said, we're not, this isn't based off of what the actual current use is, this is based off of what the legal description is of the city's property, and whether that used over years, you know, somebody went a little further to the north, or a little further to the south, because it was easier, or there was a rut, or something.
Okay.
A lot of that, so the existing conditions aren't really what's, what's at issue, it's what the city legally owns, and we're just acknowledging, we're, we're not establishing anything by way of the ordinance, other than that this city property is being acknowledged as a public right-of-way. Whereas, because we've got plenty of city properties that aren't public right-of-ways, whether they're parks, or, or drainage ditches, or, or other things, so this is what the request was.
How come the Visby and the Humbley are all that? I used to use chains to measure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to learn that.
Because I don't have to chain up something on an angle when it's...
Back in the day, we'd have to use lasers to measure.
Okay. This, this establishes the legal ownership of the, of the city property, and this is a...
No, not the, not the, just that this city property is being used, is...
It's the legal...
Right-of-way.
The legal ownership of the right-of-way.
Right to use it as right-of-way.
All right, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 0-22-21, designating certain city property located in Zacatecas Canyon, and generally known as Grove and Gulch, as a public thoroughfare and right-of-way.
I second.
I'm motion and second for item four, to approve resolution R-2301. I'll roll call this.
Councilmember Hill? Council, oh, councilmember Hill? Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Suiet?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes. I'll move on to new business. New business will be discussion of possible approval, resolution R-2301. Did I say 2301 on the last one? I should have said 022-2, I'm sorry. Anyway, this new one is item number four, approval of resolution R-2301, amending the amending the finance and public works sections of the city fee schedule. So Matt, can we turn it?
Yeah, I think I was thrown out there, because we're requesting this update because of the recent changes that we've made to the short-term rental, uh, ordinance and code, as well as the, uh, some changes that we're requesting to be made to the, uh, Public Works, uh, trash, uh, service bill, which is essentially, there were, uh, a number of, a few, single individual, like really small, one-room, uh, commercial accounts that weren't generating any outside trash, but our, our minimum was higher than, than what, like, the residential minimum was. So we're establishing essentially a, uh, a, a minimum for those types of businesses that only have one individual, uh, yeah, so that we can try to accommodate for business owners. To be able to do better, bring in more podigos and.
Yeah, there's only one.
Okay, um, any comments or questions?
Yes.
Oh, you want to go?
Yes, I just want to comment that I think it's great to see a trash can go down. Yes.
And I agree. I think it's fair. Like, small operation, paying as much as a big entity, I think it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah, we should go on you, Seth, for that idea. Other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-three dash oh one, amending the finance and public works section of the city fee schedule.
I second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution R dash twenty-three oh one. Is this, does this need two votes or just one? Oh, it's just a resolution?
Yeah, so, just a roll call.
I'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So move. Move on to item number five, the discussion of possible approval of a construction contract with Rustic Adobe Masonry for Adobe wall repairs in Camp Naco. Bookworks director, Matt.
Good evening. Uh, so, contract is with Rustic Adobe Masonry, like, uh, mayor has stated. Uh, this is to do assortment of adobe repairs down at Camp Naco. Um, and this is a contract, uh, with that company, um, so we can go through different intervals and be able to use this contractor when needed in the future. Of course, like usual, anything that's over five thousand comes to council in the future as well. Um, so this, for this work, it's thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, and this, what is the main building that they're working on for this? Um, one of the best halls of one of the, uh, grates.
Okay.
Yes.
Isn't, isn't the total forty-one thousand?
Yes.
Three.
Steve Damer.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Um, this has small crown here, so I apologize. Yeah, so the total is forty-one thousand five sixty-two dollars.
And Mr. Mayor? I apologize, because this all had to get put together after I left on vacation. Um, so one thing that isn't clear is that, uh, there are actually three different entities going to be picking up the cost of this, and one, one of which is going to pay the initial amount. And then, uh, that's a grant through, uh, one of the architectural firms that we've been working with. And part of it will be coming from a twenty thousand dollar grant that we got from the, the trust for historic preservation sometime back. Uh, the city will be on the hook for approximately fifteen or fourteen thousand of the entire amount.
Which will come out of the.
So it's, it's going to be paid for by three separate entities.
I see.
I apologize. Uh, this thing got on the dock after I left town, and I didn't have a chance to review it.
That's right. So basically, it's, the first thirteen, or the two thirteens are paid by two grants, and the last one would be from the four point five we got. Okay.
Good question. Matt, has there been any engineering done on this? What's the basis of these repairs? I mean, they, they're showing they're, they're going to put in these buttresses, uh, an engineer with that? You see how, if that's effective? And it doesn't, it doesn't say how tall that buttress is. It doesn't say whether they're concrete-filled or not.
These are, uh, sorry, Matt.
No, that's fine.
These are essentially preserving existing walls.
Right.
Uh, basically on part of the camp that is already ruins. And, uh, the, 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 um, the point of this exercise is to take the ruins and stabilize them so that they don't fall over.
Yeah, I get that.
And so, uh, basically, they're going to protect, um, the remaining adobe, and then put some buttresses up against them, which will basically be blocked.
Right, that's what it's showing. I just wondered if an engineer had looked at this.
I, I, I don't believe the actual engineers looked at it.
How effective these things are, I mean, and, and, because the proposal, it left out some things. Doesn't say how high that is, doesn't say if they're concrete-filled. Um, also, I was concerned about the historical aspect of it. Are these going to be permanently there?
Right, yes.
So you've got that pin going through to the inside. Just, you know, I just wonder how much thought. I, I suppose this company has done a lot of this kind of work, but it just didn't seem like they gave a really clear, um, description of their work.
Yeah, I actually was out there on the site with the guy, uh, when he explained what he needed to do.
Right.
Uh, on that, and, uh, um, I, I'm just going to be honest with you, Frank. Uh, I, unless you tell me, I have to hire an engineer.
Well, I'm just curious what, how, how it's based, you know? How they came up with these locations and, and how wide those things are, and how tall they are.
I know with one thing, um, not being engineers, not being in engineers, but this is something that they do have done, um, for many years. So I'll share this something.
How does a company have engineers? The construction company, I mean, when they build something, what, what, you would have an engineer? How would you build them without an engineer?
Well, here's, here's the simple point. Here's the simple point I'm trying to make. We're talking about ruins here, okay? Very little ruins, okay? But we want to preserve those ruins, because that's part of what Camp Naco.
So this, this building won't have a roof on it?
This is not a complete building. It will not have a roof on it. It won't have any other structure. We're preserving what is, what remains of a structure that fell apart many, many years ago.
My understanding is this, it's, these are one-foot segments, so it's, so it's a ten-foot wall. That's a seven-foot-high buttress on a twelve-inch, um, block, but they will fill with concrete, because the halfer, they wouldn't believe, it wouldn't be good to put halfer in. Or I mean, I mean, I'm sorry.
Just didn't list it. That's all I'm saying, there's a definition there. And who's going to, you going to check on all of the work, or who goes down?
Yeah, we'll check on the work ourselves.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Um, the only, I was questioning was the footer. I don't know exactly what the, the footer did look. But it's, these are nothing more than to stop the wind from blowing over there.
Right, yeah. And, and to keep as, as much rain and stuff from slipping, from getting the adobe swept.
Yeah, the bottom, that'll also work.
Right.
Now, the worst deterioration is at the bottom, or the.
That's what it typically is on the.
We, we need to preserve that, or the water.
I would suggest that probably when we get to the point where we work on the true building with the roof and everything, that there's a whole set of plans. What, will the county do the inspections?
County will do the inspections, because it's in the county.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we already have architectural drawings for all the buildings. Um, and we will be, um, contracting with the same architect that did the total master plan back in twenty-seventeen, uh, for a much lesser amount, like seven to nine thousand dollars, to update the master plan that's already been done. There's alr, already been a considerable amount of technical work already done on this property, but at that time, it was, um, assumed that, uh, the, the, the preservation that we're proposing tonight was going to be, they were going to totally rebuild the barracks into a, a whole building again. Um, collectively, we've decided that it's kind of cool to have the ruins, so that that can give you an idea of what adobe looked like, how that type of construction, which is not all that common in these parts.
Not anymore.
So, no, it isn't. So basically, uh, we're just trying to preserve what's left, so we want that. And then, now, there's going to be a lot of engineering being done between now and the time we start rebuilding the barracks and the hospital building and the officers' quarters. Or the officers' club. Officers' club and the hospital will go first.
It'll be twenty-one hundred dollars.
There will be all kinds of technical monies spent.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement that that needs to be preserved. I'm just wondering how, what the process was. I didn't see a lot of detail in what they were saying, so just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, these, well, I guess I don't want to know how, I, I, I guess I don't want to try and describe. These guys are more like craftsmen than they are like construction companies. And, uh, and I guess that's all I want to say publicly, because I don't want to get the guy, you know, and say, oh, he's this, or he's that. He's, um, he is well-known throughout the region for what he does. There's about two of them.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one more.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, you just have one bidder? Did you have, uh, other that bid for this work, or you just want?
Yeah, he was, he was a sole source, because he's done work there before, before we owned the property. And because of his knowledge of the property, we felt that it could, uh, qualifies as a sole source.
So you didn't have someone else look to see if you can maybe have a, a different option?
No, because we felt he was the best, because soon for.
But as, as a city, don't we usually look for bids when we, we do them some more?
Well, and, and here again, I was on vacation, okay? Uh, but normally, what we would say is, is that we, we would tell you that this is going to be a sole source contract, for the reasons that, um, he is a specialist in this particular type of reservation.
Anything else? Jay, one last motion?
I move to approve the construction contract with Rustic Adobe Masonry for adobe wall repairs at Camp Naco.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number five, the, uh, approve.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the roll, um, we did prepare a contract.
Yeah.
And so he bears all the liability.
Yeah, I was reading that, and he have a guarantee for two years, so I, I saw, I, I read into this, so.
Yeah, this wasn't, this wasn't going to happen. We, we made it happen.
Yeah, my question was about deformality. Usually, we get bidders, unless we have more than one, and, and the way it was not presented, and like, uh, like Steve was saying, we, we usually said, we have a sole for that purpose. I did not see this here. So that's why my question comes.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility for that.
Thank you. Okay, that's good.
All right. Again, uh, we have motion and a second before us. Um, item five, to approve the construction contract with Rustic Adobe Masonry. I'll roll call for forty-one thousand.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So move. Move on to the last item. This is the city manager's report. He's been in town so much, he must have a lot to do.
All, all I will report tonight is that I'm happy to be home, um, after, uh, three days out and three days back, in weather that probably, uh, was about as bad as I've ever seen it. And, uh, you know, it, uh, you know, one thing, what happens when you drive across country in the winter time, you can't necessarily guarantee what it's going to look like. So I am happy to be home, and I wish everyone here a happy new year.
All right. With that, um.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. So move. We are adjourned. Thank you.